Okay, is everybody ready? City Clerk, are we, are we ready?
Yes, Mayor, we are ready.
Okay, thanks, everybody. All right, welcome to October 14, 2025, Millbury City Council Meeting. I like to call this regular meeting to order at 7:19 PM. Please do a roll call.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hallibur?
Present.
Mayor Feng?
Here, online.
All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you so much, and for those who are able, please join me in rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, we begin tonight's ceremonial presentation with a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and tonight we're honored to have the community overcoming religious abuse, Cora Chief Executive Officer Karen Ferguson and Cora Board Member Phoebe Van Cat, Councilmember Van Cat, joining us this evening. And leading us tonight with this proclamation, we have Councilmember C.C. Riley. Councilmember?
Whereas more than one in three women, one in four men, and one in two transgender individuals experience some form of physical or sexual violence and/or stalking by their intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas, community overcoming relationships abuse, Cora staff provided more than 10,000 critical services in the past year ensure survivors have access to safety, advocacy, and healing. And whereas, Cora provided over 1 million in client cash assistance, including subsidized rent, security deposit, and a range of emergency services, expensive from car repairs to storage costs. And whereas, in San Mateo County, 121 adults and children were provided emergency shelter, including stairs, in safe houses and motels. And 144 adults and children were provided longer-term rental assistance to escape their abusers last year. And whereas, 606 adults and children received therapies to help them with domestic violence-related trauma. And Cora filed 2,092 requests for legal assistance. Whereas, intimate partner violence continues to be among the most under-reported crimes, and Millbury is committed to eliminating all forms of intimate partner's abuse. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbury City Council, hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness about and encourage our residents to do their part to help rate of our community of intimate partner violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. And joining us tonight, thank you for joining us, Chief Executive Karen Ferguson and Board Member Phoebe Van Cat.
Thank you very much, Mayor Feng and City Council members. We're really honored to be here today. This is our vice chair of our board, so I'm really honored that she was able to come with us today. But I think that the reason for these proclamations is kind of what I just want to highlight a little bit, which is that it is so important that we call out to the community that domestic violence is something that happens behind closed doors. And yet, if we just think about the statistics that you, Councilwoman, just read to us, right here in this room, we are survivors, we are people whose neighbors, whose friends, whose family members are survivors of domestic violence. It is always here with us, so it is not just behind some closed door, you know, a mile away, but it is front and center, and so calling out Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October is a critical part of continuing to bring the light to this. I want to thank the city of Millbury, you've been a terrific partner for us. The Rotary Club of Millbury has provided funding that specifically supported Tony's Closet, which is a home goods boutique that is free to all of our Cora clients. We also partner with Millbury in terms of the Emergency Response Program, which is when Cora responds after a 911 call to provide additional support and resources. And Millbury was one of the cities that supported the Speak Up campaign, where we went out to over 300 businesses and provided education about domestic violence to the different community organizations so that they could serve their own employees and the individuals that might be visiting that business better. So thank you so much for your support of this mission and for the proclamation.
Thank you so very much. And Board Member Van Cat, only if you wanted to.
Originally wasn't going to say anything, but I wanted to thank the City Council staff and the audience, the community tonight. And I also wanted to share that this is personal for me. I'm a survivor myself of domestic violence, so when Karen said it's happening, or either you're a survivor or someone is overcoming it right, right, right next to you, it's true. So this is absolutely an important matter in our communities, and it's a root cause, right? It ripple affects to a lot of other issues, like housing, food insecurity. So I appreciate that Millbury has stepped up to support Speak Up, Cora, and domestic violence survivors in general. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody. And since I'm not in the chamber, but if you guys would like to have a photo at the podium, you guys are welcome to do so at this time. And thank you for allowing me to join you on Spirit. Thank you, everybody. All right, next up, we have a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month. Joining us today, we have the CCFD representative to receive this proclamation, and we have Councilmember Bob Nguyen leading us on this proclamation. Councilmember Bob Nguyen?
Whereas the city of Millbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all the living and visiting our community, and whereas fire is a serious public concern both locally and nationally, and homes are in the locations where people are at most significant risk from fire, and whereas educating our residents about fire prevention strategies can significantly reduce the risk of fire-related injuries, loss of life, and property damage. And whereas during the Fire Prevention Month, attention is focused on fire prevention practices such as checking smoke detectors, developing and practicing home fire escape plans, and maintaining fire-resistant landscaping. And whereas Fire Prevention Month encourages families, schools, and businesses to take action to prevent fires and to stay safe in the event of a fire emergency, and whereas Central County Fire Department and other emergency services work tirelessly to protect our community from dangers of fire, and they provide valuable fire safety education and resources to help residents prepare and respond effectively. And whereas it is crucial that all residents of Millbury adopt fire prevention habits such as proper use and storage of flammable materials, creating defensible space around homes, and practicing caution during high-fire danger conditions. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to participate in fire prevention efforts at home, work, and school to reduce the risk of fire in our communities. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbury City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Fire Prevention Month.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and we have the CCFD representative joining us at the podium.
Good evening, thank you, Council, for recognizing Fire Prevention Month.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, for recognizing, uh, Fire Prevention Month. Um, this year's theme is Charge Into Safety. Um, so we're talking about lithium ion batteries, and some of the key, uh, safety messaging, uh, this year is when you purchase batteries, make sure they're listed by nationally recognized testing laboratories and labeled accordingly. Stop charging batteries once the battery is fully charged. Use equipment, charging equipment that's, um, compatible with your device. And to be safe, only use charging equipment that is supplied with your device. Stop using your device if the battery shows signs of damage such as unusual odor, excessive heat, popping sound, swelling, or change in color. Have all repairs performed by a qualified professional. So when you need to recycle your batteries, you want to not place them in a trash, but find a recycling, um, cycling, uh, agency who does this. You can go through, uh, San Mateo County Health or call to recycle.org. You also want to make sure when you're charging, uh, electric mobile devices like e-bikes, scooters, um, that you charge them when you're awake and outside if possible. You don't want to leave one charging overnight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and, uh, CCFD representative as well, and, uh, you know, if you guys would like to have a photo of the podium, you might do so at this time. All right, thank you for joining us, Central County Fire, and always keeping us, uh, safe throughout the entire community. Thank you for all you do. Um, next up, we have Milbury Library Annual Report Presentation, and joining us this evening, we have Milbury Library Manager, Jeff Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor Feng, city council members, city staff, and the public. I'm Jeff Gibson, your new library manager of the Milbury Library and a branch of the San Mateo County Libraries. I started last month, and I have spent the past month, uh, working diligently to get up to speed on this incredible community and this incredible library that you have here. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm pleased to share the San Mateo County Library's annual report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, next slide, please. First established as a county-free library in nineteen twelve, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in nineteen ninety-nine. Our service area is three hundred and fifty-one square miles, made up of our eleven-member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. Each of our thirteen libraries is part of a larger system, offering countless opportunities for connection and exploration. We curate our offerings to meet the needs and interests of our community to help them thrive. Next slide, please. This year, we rolled out our new five-year strategic plan. Our new plan grounds us in our shared goals, which are to listen, connect, discover, and engage. As we put our new vision, mission, and goals into action, we know our continued success depends on the insights, contributions, and voices of the communities that we serve. Next slide, please. As part of our strategic plan, we introduced a new vision and mission to guide our work. Our updated mission, together, we build meaningful connections and inspire lifelong curiosity. Now, I'd like to share how that's coming to life at our libraries. Next slide, please. As you can see, the programs and collections at San Mateo County Libraries are well-used. This year, we saw one point seven million library visitors, two point four million items circulated, and over eleven thousand six hundred programs and events. Beyond the numbers, each data point represents the connections, learning, and growth that happens across our community. Next slide, please. We strive to deliver services and offer opportunities where our diverse communities feel seen, heard, and valued. Each of our staff brings unique backgrounds and experiences to the library. This diversity strengthens how we serve through responsive programs, meaningful outreach, and culturally rich connections. Next slide, please. Our culture of discovery and exploration is reflected in our nearly two hundred and fifty thousand active cardholders. We saw two point eight million website visits, almost forty-two thousand laptop checkouts, four million in library Wi-Fi sessions, and a huge increase here, twenty-three thousand three hundred and forty-three hotspot checkouts, thanks to additional hotspots that were added to our collection in the past year. And finally, we were proud to welcome fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-four new cardholders this year. Next slide, please. At the local level, uh, Milbury Library had over two hundred and thirty thousand library visitors and circulated over three hundred and eighty thousand items this past year. Next slide, please. Also at the local level, we saw almost seventy thousand digital downloads this past year, and program attendance at Milbury Library reached over twenty-eight thousand people. In addition to our popular onsite programs, we make a point to get out into the community. You've likely seen us at the Mid-Autumn Festival, the Japanese Cultural Festival, as well as Mills High School and the local middle and elementary schools, among other sites. We also create moments for every stage and phase of life to foster growth and curiosity, and I'm excited to share some of our greatest accomplishments from last year. Next slide, please. Our fifty-five-plus programs continue to grow, connecting older adults with opportunities to stay active, learn new skills, and build friendships. We create welcoming spaces and provide meaningful experiences where we help older adults find connection, routine, and a sense of belonging. Here is a short video highlighting one of our recent fifty-five-plus field trips, which have been highly popular.
Le agradezco mucho a la biblioteca ustedes que tuvieron la gentileza de traernos. Eh, esto es un bien para uno, un bienestar para nosotros. Les agradezco muchísimo en mi nombre y creo que en nombre de todos.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Oh. We are helping families spark a love of reading from day one. Through Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, children ages zero to five receive free books in the mail each month. Since launch, thousands of San Mateo County kids have enrolled in this program. We are thankful to our partners at the Dollywood Foundation, the Foundation for San Mateo County Libraries, and our friends' groups who make these offerings possible. Next slide, please. Together with our partners, we bring the library into the community in fun and unexpected ways. At Library Night with the San Francisco Giants, thousands of fans explored our Maker Mobile, browsed eBooks, and took home baseball-themed books. And at the San Mateo County Fair, we created a vibrant reading garden where visitors of all ages enjoyed books and activities. Wherever we go, we remind people the library is within reach. In this short video, you'll see highlights from the Giants' library night. Thank you. Our staff are at the heart of everything that we do. This year, our library champions leaned into growth and new ideas. We turned creativity into even better services for our communities. We celebrate our team, from longtime staff who know our communities deeply to new team members like me who bring fresh perspectives, and we're thankful for the support of volunteers and our friends' groups who continuously help us to reach even more people across the county. Next slide, please. Our libraries are, of course, community destinations. We provide welcoming spaces to gather, lean, learn, and connect. Through continued upgrades and new spaces, we are always looking to make them more comfortable, innovative, and inspiring for everyone in collaboration with you. Here is another short video showcasing the reopening of the Belmont Library after it received some recent upgrades to support our communities.
We are so happy to see you all today, eager to join us in exploring the refreshed library, which is, as everyone knows, really the gem of our community.
Thank you. Milbury Library celebrated its own wins and progress last year. In November, the community celebrated the building's twentieth anniversary with live music, a paint night, a gallery of historical artifacts of Milbury, and the library building's history. Next slide, please. I'd also like to highlight Milbury's Tech Exchange Mandarin workshops, which empowered Mandarin-speaking residents in the community to learn valuable digital literacy skills in their native language. This session taught participants Windows ten skills, with other sessions focusing on artificial intelligence, internet browsing, and laptop basics. We received feedback through various channels, and one of my recent favorites includes this quote from one of our library patrons. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to say thank you. Thank you to city staff and the city council for your collaboration with us and for championing the library, including Vice Mayor Ruben Holliver and Recreation Director Hannah Moran for your work on the Library JPA Governing Board and the Operations Committee. I want to thank the Friends of the Library for their ongoing support, advocacy, and celebration of library offerings. I want to thank library staff for their committed and passionate work, and the Milbury community for your involvement and feedback. Um, thank you all for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff, and, uh, welcome to Milbury and, uh, serving as our new, um, library manager. We really appreciate it, and, uh, you know, it's such an important, um, you know, it's such an important facility, uh, for our constituents, for our city, and I know many uh, of our youth, our children, and students, and then also seniors use it every day for their creativity, for their work, for gathering, for projects together, and, uh, it's just a very important gathering place and a learning place for all of us. And the Makerspace, uh, has been extremely valuable, uh, to all of us. So, and we're thankful for the partnership with the county, uh, in making the library an integral part of, of our amenity, uh, to our city. So thank you so much for doing that. Um, anyone else on the council would like to make any comment, um, for our library?
I'll make a real quick comment, Mayor Feng. Just want to thank the library and all the people that make it possible day in and day out to help all those residents and folks from around the county that come in there to use, uh, all the facilities there, whether it be checking out books, using the internet. I can tell you on a personal level, my little niece, who's nine, she'll be ten next month. She actually sparked her love of reading by going to the library when she was very young here in Milbury. So it's awesome to see her really embrace reading, and it all started over here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
You have a quick question? I have a quick question.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen, and then after that, uh, Councilmember Riley. Because it's, uh, the, just, just so you know, it's a little small, um, on my videos, so it's hard to see your hands, so just go ahead and, uh, and, and holla. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, so you provide free, uh, Wi-Fi, free books, obviously, uh, at no cost to the, the visitors, which is a great thing, right? It improves accessibility to knowledge. Have you considered integrating, uh, AI as part of that free offering for people?
Uh, we have considered that, yes. So, um, like I said in that Mandarin, um, Tech Exchange workshop, they did discuss artificial intelligence, so there's both, um, plans to provide training and workshops on that, as well as integrating the staff work and, and helping us. So we have, uh, a committee kind of focused on that at the moment, um, and determining what to do going forward. Um, but it is crucial that we, um, update and change with the times, and AI is definitely one of those, um, integral, um, technology innovations that we need to keep up with. Thank you.
Right? Councilmember C.C. Riley.
Welcome to Milbury, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for your presentation. That's very great. We are use library a lot, and our residents, our seniors, and our children, even myself, always use the, uh, use the library. Thank you for providing these programs and the place for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Not much else to add, but thank you very much for, uh, it's been an excellent, um, service that we received with the county, a great partnership, and welcome aboard to Milbury, and I hope to see you here for many years to come. Thank you.
Hope so, yeah. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Council. Appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Jeff, and, uh, always welcome here to City Council. All right, um, so after that, uh, moving on to agenda overview and staff briefing, uh, and candidates of events, and City Manager Tom William, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council. Tom Williams, City Manager. Um, so I would first and foremost, we experienced our first significant, uh, rainstorm of the season the last few days, especially yesterday afternoon, where we had some pretty torrential, uh, downpours. So I'd just like to thank our public work staff, um, Craig Centus, John Gianoli, um, Chris Falzone, Lynn Harkness, uh, Harry Quong over at the Treatment Plant, Joe Mendoza, and Chris Junior, uh, and all of their staff for doing a great work in all of the storm prep, uh, in anticipation of the storm, so, um, no flooding occurred, and, uh, just a, just an outstanding job, as always, by our public works crew, so hats off to them. Um, also, um, great little celebration the other day. A longtime Milbury resident, Beatrice Cofaro, turned one hundred on October ninth. Um, she was beside friends and family. Uh, the mayor proclaimed October ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, as, uh, Beatrice Cofaro's Centennial Day. Um, you can see, uh, Vice Mayor Ruben Holliver was there to present the proclamation at Beatrice's one hundred birthday. So on behalf of the city of Milbury, we would like to just wish her a very happy one-hundredth birthday. Next slide. So goats have arrived here at the city of Milbury. This is Schultz Park, which is at the end of Taylor, uh, Avenue. Um, this is a pilot program that we're testing, uh, for goats to clear the underbrush as part of a fire prevention program. Um, so the goats, uh, arrived in Milbury a few days ago, and of course, they're doing a bang-up job clearing the area, so this is a really nice, natural way. Um, I've used this before in other cities, and it's a very good, successful, uh, project to, uh, environmentally clear, and they eat a lot, so a lot of brush is, uh, is cleared, uh, for fire prevention. So we'll report back to the city council and, uh, um, see if we continue this program in other areas. Uh, upcoming events, so Beats, Brews, and Vines, this is our third Thursday concert series, this Thursday, October sixteenth, from six to eight P.M. We have a great band that, uh, uh, has played for us before called GTC. They're the Good Times Collective, uh, to close out the end of our, uh, summer concert series. Um, GTC covers everything from Bruno Mars to E forty, uh, to, uh, party classics that you all know and love. Um, so join us this Thursday, uh, at the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest at six P.M. for our last downtown concert series, and certainly, um, enjoy our local restaurants and, uh, and certainly enjoy our local restaurants and places to dine here in the city of Milbury this Thursday night. Also, Saturday, October 18, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on the Spur Trail, right off of Milbury Avenue at Palm Avenue. Whoops, this is different. Okay, this was snuck in. So, this is Mills High School. This Friday, October 17, at 5:00 p.m. in the main quad, they have their Groove-a-thon. And so, this is the high school band, and they have a Music-a-thon. It's free admission, and people can get information at millshsmusic.org backslash groove dash A dash thon, or you can just show up to Mills High School in the central quad, hear them play, and donate to the Mills High School Band. So, great, great little event for this Friday night, October 17. Now, Saturday, October 18, the next day, we do have a compost giveaway. This is from 9:00 to noon on the Spur Trail on Milbury Avenue at Palm Avenue. This is in conjunction with our solid waste and recycling provider, South City Scavenger. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. It is free, but you also have to bring your own shovel and containers for the compost. So, compost giveaway this Saturday, October 18, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on the Spur Trail, Milbury Avenue and Palm Avenue. Next, on Saturday, October 25, a week from this coming Saturday, we have our electronics recycling and reuse drop-off event. And so, you can drive-through drop-off electronic events. This goes to Goodwill and San Mateo County Sustainability Department. They also, this year, will accept clothing as well as electronic small appliances. So, working electronics items will be donated, again, to our local Goodwill stores and nonprofits. And non-working electronic items will be processed for e-waste recycling. So, Saturday, October 25, from 9:00 to noon, this is at the Milbury Library parking lot. Then, Saturday, October 20, or excuse me, Sunday, October 26, the following day is the annual Mills Rotary Kids Carnival. This is the 27th year, and it's an annual event hosted by the Milbury Rotary Club and Interact Club in conjunction with the city. It's a free event for kids that are 10 and under. There'll be treats and snacks, a Halloween costume contest, and the very famous Boswick the Clown, who's made many, many TV appearances over his career and is always a big hit with the kids. So, Mr. Mayor, that is what is happening around Milbury in the next two weeks. And I hope to see everybody this Thursday night for the last concert downtown and supporting our downtown businesses.
Thank you so much for the update, City Manager. Anyone have any questions for our City Manager? Seeing none. And City Attorney, would you please do a report out on tonight's closed sessions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, which is the approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of July 22, 2025, and we have closed session meeting minutes September 9, 2025. We have regular meeting minutes of September 9, 2025, closed session meeting minutes of September 23, 25, and the regular meeting minutes of September 23, 2025. Any council members have any questions or discussions, any changes or amendments? Seeing none, we'll take a motion and we'll do a roll call. Any motions? Because I couldn't see the board, so sorry. If you guys can call it out.
Mayor, there's a motion by Councilmember Nguyen and second by Vice Mayor Holliber.
Okay, so tonight, because I'm remote, so we need to do a roll call vote. So, with that said, with that motion and the second, can we do a roll call, please?
And I just want to confirm, I believe the motion is to approve.
Correct.
The, my apologies. Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Bernold?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliber?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The five set of meeting minutes are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Just for the council, since I could not see the voting board, so tonight, if you want to make a motion in a second, would you please do a voice motion? So, tonight, we have no oral report from any city committees or commission chair. Moving on to public communications, as this is the portion of the agenda reserved for those who wish to comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have two minutes tonight. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor to the public. And since I'm not in the chamber tonight, we'll still begin with the in-chamber speaker, and our city clerk is kind enough to help me with that process. So, the language, please call the first in-person speaker. And also, before we start, how many online speakers do we have at the moment?
At this time, there are none.
Okay, so we have eight total, and then I'm gonna cut off.
Mayor, we just have one hand raised online.
Okay, that's fine. So, upon the beginning of our public comment, you know, this will be the nine speaker, and that will be all. We have a number 10?
We have two additional in-person speaker as well.
Okay, that's fine. So, that will be the end of all the public speakers for this evening. Go ahead and we'll get started with the first speaker, please.
Okay. The first speaker is Elizabeth Chu. Following will be Allison Carrado, Carrada, excuse me. So, first speaker, please go ahead and come to the podium.
Yes, two minutes, please.
Jeff, I am a homeowner in the Milbury Highlands area. I'm here to advocate for the establishment of off-leash dog hours at Milbury Central Park. Research has shown that dogs behave better, are happier and healthier, and less reactive if they are socialized and exercised. The same goes for us humans. The establishment of off-leash hours in Central Park in Milbury will help protect the safety and happiness of all of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu.
Hi, this is, my name is Allison. I also am speaking regarding off-leash hours for Central Park. As she stated, we moved here.
Alice, could you go closer to the mic? Thank you.
Okay. A couple of years ago, we came across, were introduced to the Central Park. We found like-minded owners of their dogs who are looking after their dogs for their well-being and safety. We became a community. I mean, they had established a community. We added to the community. We continue to add, except after the off-leash or the leash law was starting to be enforced, they kind of depleted. There's only like a handful of people now. And then that's been about a month. We did that much. So, we would like off-leash hours. We have seen dogs who have, you know, haven't been coming to the park and having the freedom to run wherever. They're becoming more reactive. You can see their frustrations in their actions. So, that's why we would like to have these off-leash hours. Help us, owners also educate each other on the behaviors of our dogs. Thank you very much. Please consider adding it to the agenda.
Thank you, Allison. The third speaker, please.
Hello. Public comment. We do have one of yours, as Louise.
The next speaker is Jeffrey Tang, and following Jeffrey Tang, it is Kathleen Kimura.
Mr. Tang.
Jeffrey, go ahead.
Hello, city council members. Thank you for hearing me. I'm also here to speak on the topic of the off-leash hours at Central Park. I don't have anything that crazy to add, you know, other than maybe a little personal anecdote. You know, my dog grew up during COVID, grew up with kind of a lot of anxiety. And having this community around was a big part in helping her kind of overcome that and socialize with other dogs. So, if there's at all possible, I'd love to get that on the agenda for a future discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tang.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Feng. My name is Kathleen Kimura. I chair the Milbury Japanese Culture Festival Committee and also Milbury Sister Cities Commission. I'd like to thank you all for coming to our festival held back on October 5. We very much appreciated that. And I'd like to give a huge shout-out to our Public Works Department and Recreation Department. They were amazing. Without our sponsors, our vendors, our supporters and volunteers, the festival would not happen. And I'd also like to thank the Milbury Chamber of Commerce, who continue to be our fiscal sponsor. And also, thank you for honoring Ken Kashiwahara, Milbury resident and retired ABC National News reporter. Ken volunteered his time and expertise for the festival since the beginning. And Jana Katayama, who is a Channel 2 reporter, also surprised Ken with the presence of friends and colleagues from local TV stations. Jana is the president of the Asia-Pacific Journalists Association, of which Ken is a former president, and all of them have such high regard for him. We had the best attendance on record, attended by visitors from throughout the Bay Area and beyond. Sister City representatives from San Jose, Cupertino, Santa Clara, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, San Carlos, San Mateo, Foster City, Milbury, San Bruno, South San Francisco, Half Moon Bay, and San Francisco gathered for a photo op, which was great. And now, we're all very much looking forward to being able to enjoy the proposed Friendship Garden to recognize Milbury's Friendship City of Hanju, Japan, as we all now do with Most Grove and Lassarina Plaza, which honor our sister cities in Malta and Chile. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimura. Next up?
All right, the next speaker is Eunice Dally, followed by Wendy Lu. And I do want to remind speaker, please adjust the mic to your mouth level before speaking. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Eunice.
Good evening, Mayor Feng and city council persons. Eunice Danley, I live at 4 Spring Valley Lane. I have served on the Milbury Sister Cities Commission for over 17 years. We are working on plans to develop a beautiful Japanese cherry blossom garden to recognize our relationship with Hanju, Japan. We became a friendship city in 2014, and for the past two years have been working with some wonderful landscape architects and have selected a beautiful design for our garden, which is to be called Hanju Friendship Garden. We have Most Grove for our sister city in Mosta, Malta, Lassarina Plaza for our sister city in Lassarina, Chile, and a beautiful olive tree at the new recreation center to show our relationship with Ramallah, Palestine. Only recently, we have come upon some vicious opposition from some Chinese residents in naming our garden. We are a diverse city and don't have any objections from other cultures. I believe this opposition is deeply rooted from incidents that occurred between Japan and China during World War II. This is sheer blatant racism and needs to be condemned by the Milbury City Council and the city of Milbury. We have told the opposition at our last meeting that there are many areas in Milbury where they could develop a garden and call it what they want. I ask for some respect for all the effort we have dedicated to making Hanju, Japan, a friendship city, and name this beautiful addition to Milbury, Hanju Friendship Garden. I hope council votes with the voice of reason opposed to irrational opposition in naming our garden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Eunice. Next up?
Next up is Wendy Lu, and followed by Anna Pichler. And Wendy Lu, are you still in the chamber? Okay, thank you.
Hey, good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Anna Pichler. I live here in Milbury. And I'd like to follow up on my previous advocacy for the establishment of a designated off-leash hours at the Central, for dogs at Central Park. As you may know, Milbury currently does not have an active dog park, and the Central Park has naturally become the gathering place for local dog owners. For residents who don't have yards, this park is essential space for exercising and socializing our dog. Over the past several years, neighbors have used the park in ways without incident, helping foster a sense of strong community. This community has had members come to the last city council meeting and are here today to also ask for off-leash hours. However, there is currently no allowance for off-leash use, and increased enforcement of leash law has caused tension, despite the fact that most dog owners have been using the space responsibly and in community with other members at the park. Establishing structured off-leash hours from potentially 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at minimum would provide a balanced and inclusive solution. These designated times would help ensure dogs have a safe and predictable window to play and exercise while preserving the shared enjoyment of the park for the entire community for all members throughout the day. Other communities have successfully implemented similar programs. Washington Park, for instance, has had off-leash hours with minimal cost or disruption, requiring only clear signage. Central Park could do the same, offering a low-cost, practical way to support responsible pet ownership and strengthen our community connections. I respectfully request that this proposal be placed on the agenda for the next city council meeting and discussion for consideration. Thank you for your time and your service to your community and the attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we still have Ms. Wen Yu Lu joining us?
Ms. Wendy Lu left the chambers.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Thank you, Ms. Pichler, and next up, please.
All right, the next speaker is Christina Sbagnoli, followed by Ann Snyder.
My name is Christina Sbagnoli. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm also here in support of the off-leash dog hours. I was born and raised in Milbury. I happen to live in a duplex. I have a very small yard, but I have the opportunity to talk to a lot of community folks who happen to live in apartment complexes and don't have the luxury of even having an area to take their dogs out. So, having access to Central Park is extremely helpful. It does foster a sense of community. I've had an opportunity to meet so many wonderful people and nurture these friendships, and our dogs enjoy their friendship as well. So, I would hope that we have an opportunity to have designated hours at Central Park because of its, just the location in and of itself is ideal. And as many have already said, other cities have adopted the same thing, and it wouldn't require a lot of, you know, city planning, et cetera, to create a dedicated park. That would probably take years to implement. My dog happens to be five. I've had two dogs in the last eight years, and we've thoroughly enjoyed Central. But now, due to the fact that they've enforced the leash law and people have been fined, I've had to resort to going to South San Francisco or Seal Point Park down in San Mateo. So, anyway, and in addition, I was really excited to see that the goats are off-leash, so I'm hoping you guys might make an exception. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Ann Snyder. Tonight, I'm here with my Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency hat. We had a meeting last week on policy. I'm bringing that up to you now because one of the things that staff at Bosca is looking at is water affordability. And they've used some criteria. My comments on that were that they've lumped a lot of, they've averaged a lot of data. I'm not one that likes to see a lot of data averaged, but basically, looking at the entire 24 members, which is from the border of San Francisco up to San Leandro, circling the bay, about 2% to 4% of the population cannot afford the cost of water, talking about single-family dwelling homes. I think there's a lot of detail that's lost in averaging that. That report will be coming back to the full board in November. If the council would like, and I'm sure the Bosca staff would be happy to come and give a presentation on the criteria being looked at for the affordability of water. To me, my comments were, first of all, I don't like averaging. And if you look at Milbury and our single-family homes, it could be that many of them are able to pay for water, but they've stopped watering their yards. Now, half of Milbury is at high fire danger. The less watered our yards are, the more chances of dead vegetation, be they trees or plants, the greater the fire risk. It's an oversimplification, but it's a way to look at that model. So, I would encourage you guys to ask Bosca or I can ask staff. or I can ask staff, to come back with a report on that. They did do a really interesting pie chart, which I didn't bring today. But they looked at a $1,000 income to spend on household things, and then a $1,700 one, and they broke it down by cost of housing, food, and things like that. And you can see that out of that big, huge pie chart, only a couple little slices, a little teeny slice is water. However, the growing slice out of a household's budget is something called "other", and they think that that is internet. So we used to have a broadband committee. The cost of internet could really be hitting. I'm finally, before I leave, because I am doing City Business Mayor, huge shout out to the chief. He held down the fort last week at the Board of Supervisors meeting. You did a great job. Thank you.
Just for the purpose of this discussion, Ms. Schneider, if in the future you'd like to give us a report out based on the work for the city, which we appreciate, we can have it scheduled in item number four, which is the oral report from City Committees and Commission Chair. Therefore, we can afford you with more time for the benefit of the public. And thank you so much for your service. And Elaine, would you please do the next speaker?
Of course. And this is our last in-room speaker, Ms. Luisa Tully.
And now for something entirely different. I'm here to advocate for the City of Millbrae to join the San Mateo County Fire Safe Council. This is the oldest fire safe council in the state. It's a valuable resource. Many cities are a part of this. Regular meetings, monthly meetings by Zoom. They also have a lot of resources regarding grants that are available for mitigation. And one of the mitigation projects that I would like to advocate for is mitigation of all of the eucalyptus that are along Vallejo. They're a huge, huge risk to those of us in upper Mills Estates because we're a very high fire risk, not just a high fire risk, very high fire risk. And there's at least 200 to 300 feet of 200-tall, 200-feet eucalyptus. And that's between us and the very high fire-risk area in the Crystal Springs area across 280 from us. And when the wind is blowing from the west, from that direction towards us, very high, sometimes it's 60 miles an hour, that could be an inferno. So I urge you to take that seriously, to have someone join it. I tried to contact Craig Centus after Sam left. Sam was going to join the council. He was all in. And Mr. Centus has not answered my emails, even after I've sent him a couple of them. So I'm not sure why, but we really need to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, and we have a virtual speaker, which is Robert Van Gool. Please accept the mute.
Yes, hello. This is Robert Van Gool. I see the phone call on audio. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Feng and City Council members, for the opportunity. I'm here to advocate for the off-leash hours at Central Park as well. In the last few years, we've developed a strong community of well-behaved dogs that have socialized and gathered pretty much daily during the week with no major incidents. Now with the fourth off-leash hours, which was mainly due to complaints from a select few people, we have been forced to disperse. It's making us have to drive and get in our vehicles and add to the congestion locally and in the region. It's been detrimental to our dogs, as others have pointed out. So I really would love it if you could add it to the agenda for a future meeting. Having our community back would be great for us humans, as well as our dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. And mayor, there are no other speakers.
Thank you so very much. And then that would be the end of public communication this evening. Thank you for all the speakers. Moving on to consent calendar with item number five, approved by motion to quarterly investment schedule for the fourth quarter of fiscal year '24 to '25. Item six, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute a professional services agreement with the EKI Environment and Water, Inc., EKI for preparations of the 2025 Urban Water Management Plan in an amount not to exceed $56,882. Item seven, adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Build Corp, Inc. for the SFO Pump Station Rehabilitation Projects in the amount of $519,000, establishing a project contingency of $77,850 for a project total budget not to exceed $596,850, and authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute all contract documents up to the project budget and finding that project his exam from CEQA. Item eight, informational report for the 2025-2026 mayor and vice mayor rotation, and that's informational. Does anybody want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I do want to note that we receive a public comment for item number eight.
Thank you so much. Does anybody want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Does the public want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Any hand raised in the public, Elaine?
We have a public comment for number eight.
Okay, we'll take a public comment on number eight.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, so we need to pull that item from the consent calendar so it can be heard and addressed by the member of the public.
So we'll pull item number eight. So for otherwise, five, six, and seven, does anybody want to make a motion?
No, none of approval. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. A roll call vote, please, for five, six, and seven.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holber?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Items number five, six, and seven passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay. And staff, would you please do a, do we have a presentation for number eight? Or is it just a staff report, city manager?
No, Ms. Mayor, we would just, we have one public comment, and so we would recommend just move to the public comment, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll afford the public speaker three minutes for item number eight.
All right. Public speaker is Ken Smith. Please go ahead and come to the podium.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time and your attention. I just really, we've been through a lot in the last year or so. We've been through a lot in the last year or so with recalls and then the appointments and the elections in the different districts. And as I was going through the attachments, I was reading the City Protocol, Section 8, Rotation of the Office of the Mayor's and Vice Mayor. And on the second page, it says, according to the section of 8.1E of the protocol, current Vice Mayor Ruben Holber will be the next in line as the city mayor, and Councilman Stephen Rinaldi will be elected rather than appointee in 2024, will serve as vice mayor. I want to ensure to the council, staff, and the public that we follow this protocol because I know in past history, Ann and Marge had been passed over, and I don't know the reasons why. I just know that that's the history of it. So thank you for producing this document. And it's to the, I think everybody in our community really would appreciate if we follow this protocol. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other speaker on this item?
There are no other speakers.
Nobody online?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And this is informational. And does any comment, is there any comment from the council? Seeing none, so that brings it to the end of the item number eight. Moving on to item number nine. This is the, oh, well, we have no public hearing tonight. Moving on to item number nine, this is a study session for Mills Estate Park project plan. And then staff will present in a moment. But before we do so, I just wanted to announce that I, my property, personal home, it happens in District 5, and I happen to live within 528 feet of that property, although the law specifies 500 feet as being conflicts of interest. In the abundant of cautions, I shall recuse from this discussion, and we'll leave you all into the good hands of Vice Mayor Holber to lead our discussion, item number nine. And then, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, do we have a staff presentation for this? We have Hannah Moran, Recreation Director. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. Yeah, so today we are here to go ahead and talk about our Mills Estate Park proposed design. So just to give you a little bit of information, tonight, this is to show some background and the evolution of how we came to tonight's design with, of course, community input all along the way. And so if we could go to the next slide. Again, this is just the agenda for tonight on this item. I'll give a little brief bit about history and context. We will also go over some of the existing inventory we have in our parks. Later, we'll talk a little bit about the proposed schedule. And of course, we do have Verde Design here, which is our landscape design architects, who will talk about the community engagement we have had thus far, as well as talk about some of the park elements and, again, the recommended design at the end. So thank you, City Council, for this. Next slide. So just to give a little bit of history, Mills Estate Park was originally developed in the 1960s. In 2020, city staff did begin plans to improve Mills Estate Park, but we did pause that due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As most of you know, the need for park improvements in the Mills Estate neighborhood has been identified and will also accommodate the population growth that we've seen from new development in the city. The city did kickstart this project again, beginning with community outreach to gather input from the neighborhood and residents about all the needs and desires for this park. And on May 28, 2024, as part of the adopted fiscal year '24-'25 operating CIP budget, and it was also included in the budget for fiscal year '25-'26. We do plan to use some general funds, as well as, again, park impact fees on this project. Next slide. And again, just talking a little bit about our existing inventory, what we really wanted to point out with this graph is we are comparing nine parks here. But as you can see from these nine parks, only one has a fenced pet area, and that one is actually still under construction. That is Bayside Manor with our fence pet area, and again, currently under construction there. We wanted to highlight also Central Park. Central Park does have parking because it is attached to our recreation center. The restrooms for Central Park are also attached to our recreation center. You don't see any other restrooms in these parks, but I did want to point out that along the spur trail, there is an existing restroom at the skate park, although that has been indefinitely closed because we experienced vandalism pretty often there, and it became a maintenance, a high maintenance issue, as well as a high cost there. So we do currently have that closed. So just something to note, again, the only restrooms are at Central Park because they're located in the recreation center. And then currently, our skate park restrooms are closed. Yep, and then, so from this, after this slide, I just wanted to go ahead and introduce Verde Designs. We do have Derek McKee here tonight, who will take you through some of the community input we've already received and bring you all the way forward to our preferred design.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Derek McKee, and I'm with Verde Design. We're landscape architects, civil engineers. I also have my project manager, Daniel Clausus, here, who might help me out. Next slide. So this is a picture from our first community meeting. This meeting, the intent was to present our preliminary program, receive feedback from the community on it. It was well-attended. It was at the project site. It was a good meeting, and we received some good input. Next slide. So in the meeting, we presented three concepts. These are what we call use-relationship diagrams. And we, for the most part, had the same program on the designs. The essential components are what a neighborhood park is, playground, open turf, walkways, and seating, picnic areas, those types of elements. So this is concept one. It had the dog park down below, large player, play area. All of them actually have a large play area, and then they all have an open turf area. So this is concept one. Concept two. Next slide, sorry. Concept two moved the dog park up to be next to the play area. Again, large play area, a little smaller open turf area. And then, next slide. Then concept three, again, had the dog park up in the main area, a little separation from it this time, from the playground compared to concept two. And so those were the three options we presented to get feedback from the community on the program and get their thoughts on what we were looking at for the park. Next slide. So out of this, we had 71 people at the meeting. For the most part, we did a presentation at the beginning, and then we received feedback throughout the meeting, though, from people. And then I'll talk about it in a minute. We did give them a, like a survey for them to complete at the site meeting. So with the attendees, what we heard from everybody was a preference for natural materials, looking for native plants, natural turf, a pollinator area. Requests were made for bathrooms, parking, and support courts. Concerns were raised about rodent mitigation or migration and mitigation during the earthwork and vegetation removal. And that item, and also the concern for safety and visibility, came up at this meeting and then also the subsequent meetings that we had. Next slide. So we provided feedback forms because, again, we had people that came early, provided comments, and then the feedback forms were for more detailed information. So out of that, concepts one and three were the preferred options. Out of that, they were looking, their preferences were the seating with the views this park has, looking back toward the bay, a walking path, natural play structures. Shade was very important, and then also picnic tables within the park. And then other items they were looking at was noise mitigation, natural aesthetics, ensuring, again, safety and security. Next slide. So after this first meeting, and it's pretty much in alignment with our second community meeting, we had a community survey provided online. And that survey had 44 respondents. Primary thing here was we were looking to get additional feedback from people that weren't at the meetings. So top reasons, they came to Mills Estate Park currently, was walking and walking dogs. The other parks that they liked were Central Park and Cornavaca Park. For the people in this area, Cornavaca Park is close. I worked on Cornavaca Park, and I know it well. But both of these parks have a lot of facilities, a lot of programs. They offer a lot of different things for everybody. So there's a lot of things for people to utilize at those parks. But based on the input, benches, again, for viewing and relaxation, shade structures, picnic tables, playground, drinking fountains, and exercise equipment were top-ranked. And then, again, options one and three were preferred. Next slide. For our second community meeting, we presented two designs, and these are the two designs that we presented. Option A had the dog park down below. Again, this creates a larger open turf area. The play area in both of these designs was similar in size and scale. The, we had picnic areas, we had shade structures for them. Both of these had a pollinator garden. And then on the second one, we had the dog park up above. Again, that reduces the open turf area. open turf area. Option B also had a hard court, and it also included a parking lot down on Sebastian. Next slide. So in our second meeting, we presented this, and then we had group breakouts. And this is a picture of one table here, and they provided comments on the design. Great feedback we received, but overall, design A was preferred. They preferred using on-street parking versus off-street parking. They liked the idea of the ADA space that was provided. Items like the terrace seating and the playground layout from option B were embraced and brought back to option A. They prefer the pet area to be larger, or as bigger, as big as it can be. Concern with, again, safety and accessibility, looking at adding streetlights and crosswalks and stop signs along the adjacent street. And then, looking at the strategic placement of trees to make sure that there's views in of the park. This relates back to safety and sightlines. And then, again, using native and fire-resistant planning in the design. Next slide. So at the PRC meeting, the comments there were larger pet area from previous options, the terrace seating and adjusted playground and fitness areas, and those were accommodated. Next slide. Actually, let me recap this design. Go back a second. So on this design, essentially, this was option A from our second community meeting. The dog park, again, is along Sebastian. We made the dog park bigger. The play area was the design. It was an option B, so we included now, and what was our option A. And then, we brought in the terrace seating that's along the picnic area, kind of in the center of the picture. All right, next slide. So from the PRC meeting, the draft concept was approved. Items that the commission had comments on were to add infrastructure for a future park lighting, look at emergency access, not only for fire, but potentially for police and the security item, citing a future restroom and providing infrastructure for it. And then, the fitness court was going to be changed to the, the fitness court, we'll show you in a second. And then, use of native materials when feasible, which I think we all can embrace. And then, adding walking markers around the path for kind of your distance as you go. Then, again, natural material, looking for some permeable material on some of the paving was also incorporated. Next slide. So for our final concept, we'll walk through kind of what the program items are tonight that we are including. Next slide. Within the play area, we're looking at a traditional play area design, have a preschool age, two to five, and a school age, five to 12-year-old. In addition, we'll have some individual structures out there as well, like spinners and things like that, besides the main play structures. For the elements, we're looking to go natural as possible. There could be some composite material in there. The surface, we're looking for it to be ported in place. We are looking for some alternatives. Right now, the city is looking at, one of those is a new cork surface. And then, the other item, too, for the play area is we're looking to have it be fenced. Next slide. So some images of what the play equipment could look like. We'll have structures, some individual elements. We're also going to look to have an embankment with some slides, and that's this lower right one. And so there'd be some, again, structures and individual elements, and looking to have this be a pretty creative and inclusive playground. Next slide. For the informal lawn, it will be natural turf. It's meant to be informal, flexible, multi-use. There to just be an open space used by everybody. It'll help us also with the store management requirements that we're going to need to adhere to. Next slide. For the pet area, we are looking for it to be fenced. We are looking to have a small and large pet area. We do have two entries with a double gate, kind of a vestibule area. The turf will also be a natural turf in the dog park, and irrigated, and it will be fenced. Next slide. So this is the National Fitness Campaign structure that we're looking to change the exercise equipment to. We have had a few of these incorporated. We've had some clients incorporate them in some projects we're working on. They're very, they're used quite a bit, very popular. And they come with an app. There's grant funding to help us with the funding for this. There's optional art that many of them utilize and incorporate into the structure you can see here. Next slide. Again, shade will be very important. We're looking at several several structures within the design. We're also looking at adding trees to provide some shade. Those will take time, and we realize that, understand that. So those will be added as well. Next slide. One of the things we have is an easement that runs up to Encina, and this is the easement right here between these two homes. So what we're looking to do right now is we're working on getting a title report to be very specific about where their properties are and where your easement is. And the pictures on the right are two pictures of a park near me that I access, and these are the same situation. So these kind of show what we could do with a potentially a low fence, a good neighbor fence, and then have it go up where we get back kind of behind the front of the garages there. But looking to make this easy for maintenance, durable, and then we would get people down, and we're just planning to provide a single pathway that comes from Encina, this easement area, all the way down into the park. We are not looking to make this accessible, just because there's so much elevation change from Encina down into the main area of the park. Next slide. And then, we will have site furnishings, obviously. We will have picnic tables. We will have ADA compliance for picnic tables and park benches and a drinking fountain. But we're going to have a couple of variety of benches, some precast, some regular park benches, and then we have some maybe with a shade structure component built over. These are made from recycled or repurposed wind turbines. And it's a nice idea, and we have some more pictures of this in a moment. Other items include dog, drinking fountains, bike racks, looking at some owl barns or bird housing. Next slide. And then, one of the items the city's found to be very popular is ping pong, and we're looking to add that. It's actually something that's, we're adding in a lot of parks. And then also the, what we're looking for, the mile markers, the distance markers for the trail. Next slide. And then, with some of the furnishings, we're looking to add some aesthetics to them to, you know, make them personable to the park, to the community. But there's opportunities to do that, and we think this is very positive. Next slide. So we do have a lot of slope in this park. We're developing approximately a third of the park, two-thirds of the park are these slopes that come down into the park that are adjacent to the single-family homes above. And we're looking to restore the area at the main area. We will see what we do, if anything, up on the slopes above. But we will need to look at stormwater control. And then, again, we're looking at pollinator gardens on the design. We are looking kind of at having it in one area, but the idea was, I think, to have it be encompassed around the park as well. Next slide. So on the recommended design, some items that were incorporated in the last updates, one of them was potentially to provide emergency access into the park. It would be 12 feet wide from Sebastian. It would come up and be able to have a three-point turn that could be used by fire, ambulance, and police. Space for the future restroom, that space is designated to be down in this area, pointing to our design behind council here. And this is close to the street, so this would be a good economic situation for us, rather than bringing it further up into the park. And then, in the future, right now, we have picnic tables here, and those could be relocated up to the top in the future. And then, we're using a natural fitness layout, which is over in this corner. Previously, the exercise area was here, and we relocated to this area. And then, in the pet area, we had two entrances, but we just, before, we had them together. And on this concept, we separated them. And so they have two separate entrances that are further away from each other. And then, we also reduced our, this is the embankment area for the play area, and we reduce our square footage in here to hopefully reduce cost. Next slide. So for this recommended design along Sebastian, again, we have the pet area. We have a large pet area here, a small pet area here. We have an ADA parking space, a single one over here. That's an angled parking setup. And then, we have a pathway coming from Sebastian that would come up and do a loop around the open turf area. That pathway, we're planning to have that be ADA compliant. And off of that, we'll have picnic areas, places for benches. We have a picnic area and shade structure here. We also have terrace seating here that will have good views out. And then, the exercise area here, plantings, pollinator garden here. And along this whole edge, there are benches along the open turf. This is that pathway that goes up to the easement, probably has some stairs in there to help us with the elevation change. Above the playground, some picnic areas. This is the playground itself, again, fenced. Our main entry will be here at this area. We have one shade structure in there with picnic, and then we have several benches within the playground for parents and supervision. And then, those are the the main items for the park. Next slide. So stormwater will be very important. Right now, there were stormwater improvements put in. This is that easement pathway that you can see when it was raining last year. A lot of erosion controlling there, occurring there that we want to control. So replanting, looking at the storm drainage systems, adding stormwater management areas and biotreatment will be necessary. We also have a spring within the project that we're looking at to investigate its size, its amount of water it generates. So we did a boring over there with our geotech. Next slide. Then we do have coyotes in the park. This was brought up pretty much in all of our meetings. So we're looking to do what we can with the coyotes. We will sign the park. We will look to limit food access. We will look to have the trash cans not be accessible to them. And again, we are fencing both the play area and the dog park, which I think will be important. But many, many parks in our area have coyotes, and they are signed. And we have not seen too many issues with them, but we did hear concerns from the community about their dogs and the coyotes. And so this is something to pay attention to and look to refine if we need it. The other item that was brought up is a rodent management plan, and this is going to be completed with a multi-phase approach starting now. City's already started to look at adding traps out there. They started to clear material, which is the next item. So the bottom portion near Sebastian, the bottom left, has been cleared in two phases, and that will increase to go around the park. So you can kind of go out there and see the difference in what this contract is doing. It's, it really is clearing vegetation, removing dead trees, removing some of the invasive species, which will be good. Next slide. And then, we did do a cost estimate based on this estimate. And right now, our total construction estimate is approximately $5 million for the park. The soft costs are here, which are the engineering and city costs that it'll take to support the project. So our total estimated cost is approximately 5.9 million. And right now, the the budget for the fiscal year 2425 is 4.5 million. Renalma?
Next slide, please. This brings us to the proposed schedule. Right now, we are item number seven, the City Council. And you've already completed, as the recap was, items one through six. If council approves this item tonight, staff and consultants are ready to proceed to construction drawings. The goal of bidding this in April, as shown on item number eight, and then begin construction in the summer of 2026, as shown on item number 10. Next slide, please. So that brings us, again, as mentioned, the council action. Consider adoption of Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation for the design of Mills Estate Park, as presented this evening. Next slide, please. And with that, I take staff and consultants are here to accept any comments and take any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Start with council comments. I think we have one for Councilmember Dwayne.
Yes, mentioned 5.9 million, correct, for the cost. Is that for all the options, or is that just the option, the recommended option?
That is for the recommended options as presented.
Do we have cost estimates for the other options?
At this time.
That's something I think we should be able to have access to, see what the options look like and what were the trade-offs between that.
Well, let's talk about this for a little bit, maybe we get the expert up here. So the reason why we didn't do cost estimates is because we were evolving the design, and I don't think there, it makes cost benefit. No real added value to have cost to the designs that you were showing, that you started with, you know, the community engagement meeting one, the survey, community engagement meeting number two, Park and Rec Commission, to evolve it into the design today. And so I don't know if there's any value in providing a cost estimate to the draft concepts that were used to evolve what is being recommended this evening.
Yeah, I think the program is very similar. Our footprint is similar, and like, the playground is the same size and the options. So that would be a similar cost. So there are some things that are similar in size and scale that would also be the same in their cost. So there could be some differences, but the reality is, you're going to be very close to that estimate.
So, I see. The delta, it sounds like small between the options.
Yeah, well, maybe I can help her a little bit, because, so this is, you know, we're a million and a half off. And so the fiscal year 2425 capital improvement project allocated an estimate of four and a half million for this park. There's also a line item in the CIP for for additional years, so this coming year, for additional consideration of funding for the park. If we want to stay within the four and a half million, which was just really a holding place, you know, to get things started, we can, if the council is desirous, to go back and say, okay, how would you take this preferred plan from the community, the public, and Park and Rec Commission, and what would we have to eliminate to get to the four and a half million? I think that might be the better way to do it than compare, you know, option A, option B, option C. Because as was mentioned, this, this, they're very similar, but how would we value engineer this particular project to get to the four and a half million? Now, again, the four and a half million is, was, was an estimate, right, to get this started. So million and a half more, I can come back to the City Council, you know, to verify that based on the pace of development, the development impact fees that we're receiving, that we have the capacity to fund that. I believe we do, but there's just some things that I would have to analyze and check and bring that back to the City Council.
Was staff time also included in this estimate, like staff time allocation?
No, so we don't really include staff time in in any budget like this.
Maybe that's something to consider, is the staff time allocation, depending on direction, like options or direction we want to go. I think that gives better transparency on how much the park will cost, even the ongoing maintenance.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought you were talking about staff time for this section, but you're talking about ongoing maintenance. Yeah, we can certainly look at that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments or questions at this time, or should we go to public comment? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Do you want to take public comment first, and then we can roll back to council after?
Yeah, I think that's fine, unless there's anything pressing. But, okay, let's start with public comment on this item. And the first speaker is Zach Georgopoulos. Speakers will have three minutes each.
And council members, thank you for letting me speak on this issue. I live right at the perimeter of the park, along the edge, and I'm very much in support of this project. We've watched the park deteriorate for We've watched the park deteriorate for decades. I grew up in the area and then moved back about 10 years ago. I just want to touch on a couple of points. I was a little surprised to see the inclusion of the ping pong tables in the current plan. One thing that the public was pretty clear about, especially us that live around the park, is that the sound from the park is very much like an amphitheater. We can hear a lot of things that are going on in the park or even just around the perimeter. And it's one thing to have the voices of people, the children playing and whatnot, but I think most of the neighbors around the park will be opposed to the ping ponging noise that that will go on. And it doesn't sound, doesn't sound like a big deal, but in my case, for instance, all the way across the park, a neighbor has a batting cage. And I can hear that, like rifle shots, when it's being used. But it's someone's home and they don't use it that often, so it's not that big a deal. But the idea of the ping pong tables constantly being in use within the park and the sound coming up, I think, is is a little disturbing. Another issue is just safety generally. I do really appreciate that they've widened the path here to allow for emergency access. One thing to consider may be placement of a fire hydrant within the park. The nearest hydrants are at on the Sebastian side or on either corner. But if there's a fire in the upper area of the parks, fire hoses might have to come down from neighboring streets through yards and down the hillside. So that's that's a long way for those fire hoses to to quickly be laid out. So I would ask that something be considered along those lines. I think my 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 neighbors will have a lot of other good points as well, but those are my my issues. I I think part of this, too, is to keep this park as simple as possible for future maintenance costs. You know, the more we add, the more it's going to cost to maintain. And my biggest concern as a neighbor is if it starts to deteriorate again, and I'd hate to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Luis Velazquez Tully.
Greetings again. This is a very exciting project. And I'm here to encourage you as the city of Millbrae, who celebrates biodiversity and sustainability in press releases, to realize that the plants that get planted in this currently very, very natural park be California natives. And if you look at the California, I mean, the San Mateo County Fire Safe Council, the plant list that they have there, which I've provided to Verde Design, as well as Mr. Ahmad, are, they are all California natives. And there are principles to how you plant them to keep that fire safety in mind for both the trees and the shrubs. And I noticed there was a caveat about natives if available. And I've made a five-page list of plants that are available in Colma. And I checked their inventory at the wholesale nursery that the city uses a lot. And I would really, this could really be a showcase for our fellow citizens to learn how to plant with natives, what they look like, how beautiful they are, multiple seasons of the year. You've got trees that can be used for shade, like holly leaf cherry with white blooms, California red bud, the blue Ray Hartman sea anothus tree. So it could also be an example of fire safe planting, because all the upper part of Millbrae is currently high fire risk. So I would really encourage you to do that. I was very heartened to see the decomposed granite, because it was formerly concrete in the plan. And after having paid, as many of our neighbors have, for the consent decree that required us to be charged, surcharged in the lawsuit with baykeepers, in that in that consent decree, Millbrae agreed to be developing with permeable surfaces. So that's very nice to see. And we appreciate all the attention to detail and water management at the park as well. Hopefully, it'll turn out beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Salomya Baradwaj.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Salomya Baradwaj. I live around the corner from Mills Estate Park. And I've been attending these meetings since the first meeting. And I'm very heartened to see what it has evolved into. But I'm here today to make the case for native-only planting in the park. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah. So I know that the presenter, when they detailed the project, mentioned that native planting, when feasible. And I want to urge you to insist that we, and also make the case, saying that native planting is the only feasible option for this park. And I feel so because, one, this is a very important wildlife corridor. And Mills Estate Park is unlike any other park in Millbrae. It is, it is up in the Highlands and in an ecological corridor with slopes and a water, like pooling area. So I feel native plants will help stabilize the slopes, keep the embankments, preserve the embankments, and also help with soil erosion. And the deep taproots of the native plants are going to be the ones that hold the slopes. And all your, all the neighborhood that's surrounding it, especially when there are going to be heavy rains, there's going to be a lot of water pooling, too. So all those issues can be addressed with native planting. And there's many, there's a lot of research with that. And the other important thing is, I hear in this meeting that there were concerns about flooding with and fire risks. And all these are also some things that can be mitigated using native planting. And it's sustainable, it's low cost, low maintenance, and within three years, you probably don't need to be watering most of the native plants in that area. So I would strongly urge urge the council to consider native planting only for this park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Stephanie Flahaven.
Thank you, council, for letting me speak. I'm Stephanie Flahaven. Oops, sorry. I'm Stephanie Flahaven, a 48-year resident in Mills Estates and own on the Millsbrae Park Rim. I'm on the north side. I'm grateful for the city taking on the responsibility that they've been entrusted to with this land to reinstated as a park. Much of Mills Estates residents dismay over the beautiful park that went neglect and deceit over 35, 40 years ago, because there was no budget and it was defunded and eventually decommissioned. So knowing that there's a budget moving forward would be really advantageous for the council. There's a lot of wildlife there, as you've heard, some protected, some not, including snakes, gophers, rodents, quails, herons, hawks, owls, coyotes, bobcats. My concern would be, how does the council intend and the city intend to address displacing these animals? I ask the city, as I have in previous meetings, to be good neighbors, implement a plan that these animals will not be displaced to our neighbors' homes, as we have been led to believe. It is now, and now we expect that there should include a road and control plan implemented. And until it is, please suspend any more clear cutting of the hillsides. I ask the council to use due diligence and to proceed with caution. Oh, sorry. I appreciate efforts of Verde Design, mindfully response to the Millbrae residents with the input in their designs. I am displeased, however, that the park commissioner's motion inserted footprints for a future bathroom, infrastructure, for future lighting and ping pong tables of the council, for the council's consideration. These items were previously eliminated based on the citizen's surveys, desires, and requests. Why have a process if it's going to be overrun and dismissed? Please listen to the citizens you represent and do not include the bathrooms, the lighting, or the ping pong tables. There was a land survey done. We'd like to know when it's going to be available. Will will the city be doing soil engineering? Please keep in mind that there have been several landsides in the Millbrae, in Millbrae, including one on similar hill slopes just two blocks away. I ask council to use due diligence and proceed with caution before breaking ground for both economic reasons and future maintenance of Mills Estates Park. This is a neighborhood park. Keep it simple and peaceful and quiet and befitting of the neighborhood in which it exists. Please do not increase noise and light pollution unnecessarily otherwise peaceful, in this otherwise peaceful, quiet neighborhood. I humbly ask that the council keep the trees below level of the of the ground.
Thank you.
And that you obey the fire marshal's recommendation.
Thank you. The next speaker is Santana Thenvuat.
Good evening, council, city staff and residents. My name is Santana Thenvuat. I am shocked of the price for this Mills Estate Park, and I want to find ways to cut back. I believe that the dog park can be allocated elsewhere. I don't know who's going to use the park. Is it going to be for the neighbors or is it going to be for citywide? But I believe that it should be strictly for the neighbors, keep it twinkle. If people are going to use the dog park, it's like a seven-minute drive from downtown in a remote area to go to. And if you drive Sebastian Drive, the most, what you'll be welcome with is a caged fenced dog park. And I don't think that is, that's fitting in the neighborhood. So I suggest that the dog park should be omitted from the plan. What else do I want to say here? Yes, so that's just basically my statement here, just to eliminate the dog park for the sound, also for maintenance-wise and for security. I believe since the coyotes are territorial, the pets may be, I guess, in danger, these coyotes, even though it's in the fenced area. I really believe that the council should be really responsible of how we're going to use the funds for this park. I believe it should be allocated for other parks. We don't have lighting in Central Park, our drinking fountains, certain parks needs to be upgraded. We can use those funds for, to improve our other parks. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ann Schneider.
Good evening, Ann Schneider, Palm Avenue. For nine years on council, we never once had either city manager I worked under say, we've got extra developer fund money and war is coming in. So congratulations to you guys for having that money. When we worked on Marina Vista and Bayside Manor, we were very, very cost-conscious. Now, they're smaller parks, but they're neighborhood parks. I look at this unique space in Mills Estate. Yes, it's been ignored for decades, but so is Schultz Park. I went to Taylor in the mid-'70s. That park wasn't open then, and yet that park was supposed to be dedicated to the Highlands neighborhood, not Central Park. Also, I will tell you, Central Park didn't exist when I was in 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 middle school either. That said, because I'm that old, that said, Mills Estate is almost, what is it, 4.6, 4.8 acres? So I think what you have tonight, a decision, is it a neighborhood park? Is it a regional park? Your other decision, because of its shape, because of the existing tree coverage there and some of the plants, you've already got a pretty nature-based environment. Do you want to make it nature-based? Or do you want to put that? That's the first time in the slides tonight I saw that exercise facility. Now, I think Vice Mayor, you and I were on council when we voted for that thing on the spur trail. It's great, it gets amount of, a huge amount of use, but it does stick out like a sore thumb, because it's green and blue. And here you've got Mills Estate Park in this beautiful area that's going to have native plants and pollinators. And you're going to put in that kind of recreation just because you might be able to get a grant for it? I don't think that's the right place for it. This, I think it should be natural. Again, it's your decision on regional versus neighborhood, but I think you owe it to look at the other parks in the city then. What was the amount spent on Marina Vista and Bayside Manor? I just walked Meadows Park for the first time in years. It has a picnic table, a bench, and a playground, and a lot of grass and trees. And it's kind, that's it. That's that's it at that park. There are other neighborhoods where Councilman Nguyen lives, there's no park up in that area. The best thing that we would have to it is to take some of that developer money and look at finishing the spur trail. Look at getting underneath Millbrae Avenue on the spur trail so people can actually walk it. Do you really want to go and spend $6 million up there and then turn to all the other neighborhoods? Well, yeah, we only spent a million on you or a million and a half. At the same time, as we've worked on the Hanyu Friendship Garden, the budget was $1.5 million, which was not enough for a water feature, not even a feature that would allow, like a rain garden. So we'd have water in the winter and dry in the summer, but would still give you that Asian feeling of having a water garden. There could be other places that you could spend that money. I wish you good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final in-person speaker is Sofia Morenoz.
Hello, council members. My name is Sofia Morenoz. I reside at the top of Mills Estate Park. My home is actually the home where the easement lies on. So I am just here to speak on a few points that are somewhat concerning to me, because I've lived here for at least 21 years now. There is a V ditch behind my home. My portion, I get a notice from the city on an annual basis in October to clear that V ditch. I do diligently. The city in the last, I would say, 15 years has not. So the erosion that was shared of the path down into the park from the top of Encina is a result of the city not taking responsibility on taking care of the V ditch so that the drainage would go where it was initially intended, because it's completely full at the top. So I'm hoping that there will be funding and and in the future to not abandon and see this, the same type of results, essentially. In addition to that, there was conversation about the land survey. It would be interesting to see, being that my property is really going to be affected by the public coming through, because now it's an abandoned park and there's nobody usually there except for the coyotes and the owls that I hear at night. So it would be, I think, important for the contractor, the architect, design company, to meet with the two property owners that will be mostly affected at the very top and on our property, on on that design. There was public comment on light pollution and noise. I'm with, you know, Zach and Stephanie and some of the other neighbors. A ping pong, I know the batting cage, what that sounds like. I live at the top, I could hear it on a regular, and it is like a fire, like a shotgun fire. Lighting is in conversation. There's apparently infrastructure being placed in, but no real concept. um, but no real concept or discussion on that. Toilets invites, I think, overnighters. So my concern is perhaps in the future, campers that might want to use the bathrooms or perhaps park their RVs there. And again, um, to some of the others' points, it is a neighborhood park, so more of a natural aesthetic would be ideal. Those are some of the comments, um, that I wanted to just bring to your attention. Overall, really truly excited that there is funding to, um, make this a usable space because it is beautiful. The views are amazing. Um, I just hope that you hear all of everybody's comments from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and we do have one online speaker, Jordan Miranda.
Jordan, please accept unmute.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Um, first things first, I just wanted to say thank you again to Verde for doing a great job with the, uh, with the surveys and getting everyone's input. I think it's been an amazing thing to watch and compare to Marina Vista and, um, Bayside Manor's, um, you know, rounds of, of, uh, surveys. They're doing a great job. That being said, I still had some things to bring up. Um, I, I'm also on board with everyone else about bringing down the costs of this park for simplicity's sake. I think, you know, comparing the Marina Vista and Bayside Manor's budgets, um, this has jumped up quite a bit, and I think from what I'm hearing from all the neighbors, simplicity is the main core of what, what needs to be done here. You know, maintaining a park of this magnitude, um, given all the bells and whistles we're going to be adding to it when this park has been neglected for 30 years. Um, you know, it seems that we've, you know, we, we want to make sure we can maintain that for another 30 years. And, um, you know, I, I think, you know, comparing it to like Hanyu Friendship Garden where the budget is really hurting, maybe we can move some of those funds into that. My suggestions are for some of the new things that were brought up that also, uh, the, um, commission discussed slightly, um, were the ping pong tables. I didn't, I didn't really get to hear a lot about that, so this is new for me, but I honestly think they should be removed. Again, with the noise pollution, I don't think it would contribute very much to that space. Lights also contribute to light pollution, and they do bring up costs, so I don't think that's a very good suggestion either for this area. It's also supposed to be quiet and, you know, after hours, not be usable. Rat traps, I'm kind of concerned about that as being a long-term, uh, solution. I think rat traps should only be temporary while they get through and plant more of the native plants. Um, these California natives are so important. They create homes for a lot of these animals, um, and they reduce the spread to other neighborhoods. They also help with actual hill structure and, um, water conservation, so that's really important. And I think that a bathroom, honestly, they was suggested because they were proposing that fitness structures could be put up there for classes and that they would need a bathroom in order to hold that. Honestly, I don't really feel now that the fitness structure would be really that important, and it does stick out like a sore thumb, so maybe opt to maybe remove it or keep it more simple like we had before with some basic machines, um, considering we also have that one down on Spur Trail. But that was pretty much all my suggestions. Um, thank you for everyone's time. And I will just say, you know, comparing this part to something like a Meadows Park would be probably a good reference point just because it is still a neighborhood park, but it's very simple and it works and it does what it has to, so. Thank you for your time. Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, no more comments. Public comment is now closed. Uh, so let's go back to the council. A lot of great, um, comments that we received. So thank you, everyone, for, uh, coming out to speak tonight. Okay, so let's start with the council. If anyone has comments or questions, uh, Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Holber. I do have some questions regarding the budget. I noticed that we have about a $1.42 million delta here between what Verde came back with cost versus our budget of $4.5 million. My question is, the $4.5 million that we allocated, the placeholder that we have, where are those funds necessarily coming from and is there a timeline of when they have to be spent?
So, yeah, I want to address this issue with development impact fees because I think there's a lot of confusion, um, that's, that's out there. So, so let me first and foremost say that for us to use development impact fees for this park, it needs to be a community park, not a neighborhood park, number one. Number two is development impact fees cannot be used for existing deficiencies or maintenance. So to defer the funding for this park for lighting, say, in Central Park is illegal under the development impact fee laws. Development impact fees can only be used to accommodate the demands of the new population that's driven by new development. Under the levels of service of the state of California, for every 1,000 of population, three acres of parkland is the standard. And so this is where we're able to use development impact fees as a lion's share of the improvement to expand this park to accommodate the new residential population here in the city of Millbrae. Um, somebody had mentioned it's a seven-minute drive from downtown to here. Seven minutes in the big scheme of, of, of planning and design accessibility is, is a very good. Um, that is not a constraint, uh, for park use, uh, at all. So development impact fees can only be used to accommodate the demands of new population, cannot be used for existing deficiencies or for maintenance. I wanted to also address the, um, the concern about camping. So effective July of this year, an ordinance went into effect that prohibits camping on city streets and within, uh, public property. Um, so we've, we've been able to address that concern. Uh, and then regarding the cost of this park, somebody had mentioned, you know, Marina Vista, Bayside Manor. Well, this is, you know, three, four times as big, uh, as those parks i- in terms of, in terms of area. Um, so just keep that in perspective as, as we progress.
Timeline to spend the funds?
Uh, timeline to spend development impact fees is within five years of the collection. Or we need to bring a, a finding of the city council as to why those funds were not spend, spent within five years, uh, for an extension.
Got it. And we have plenty of other land to still develop for recreational use. Is that correct?
Well, the only other available parkland that we have is, um, is Schultz Park. Um, and that is a park that was dedicated back in the 1930s before the city was incorporated, uh, when the Highlands land development, um, or neighborhood, uh, was developed. Uh, we looked into that when we were funding the Recreation Center, uh, to actually sell it. Um, but there's a deed restriction on that park that it can only be used for a park unless it goes to the vote of the constituency. Um, so if we were to, you know, look, and, and maybe something that we should, should think about is, is putting that on the ballot to sell Schultz, Schultz Park for some, you know, residential development in that area, and we can use those funds then. And those not, those are not encumbered by any restriction of state law. We'd be free to use that revenue for other improvements, other park improvements throughout the city.
What about development along the Spur Trail, per se?
So i- in terms of the funding sources for that?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at, just to cut to the chase, is if we were to do some development around the Spur Trail. There's been conversation before amongst past electeds about potentially putting a dog park along the Spur Trail, throwing up some fencing, some simple water for the, uh, for the dogs that are within that run. So would that be something that this could be used to fund?
Yeah, so development impact fees for a dog park, a portion of development impact fees could be used for a dog park to accommodate the needs of the new population, but not 100%. I mean, so we would have to look at, you know, location of the dog park, um, where it's located, um, the capacity, and are we using that to accommodate existing demands, which would be existing deficiencies within our park system? Or is it an expanded effort to accommodate new population? So it'd be, to answer your question, it would be a combination of funding sources. There's even grant funding that, that's available for dog parks. So grant funding, general fund money, and, uh, and park impact fees.
It's safe to say we really need a dog park. We have some dog runs. It's right up there with, it's right up there with pickleball. We hear you.
Yeah, we, we, we heard the absolute need for a dog park this evening.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to that in my comments in just a second. I don't want to overshadow everyone here. So, uh, next quick question's around emergency access into the park. Does that a requirement? That, that have to be there?
So for this park, I would, um, look to our designer. I do not believe that there is a building code, uh, or a fire code requirement for EVA, Emergency Vehicle or Access, uh, to the park. Although I think it is, um, I think it's important and something that we're recommending. As this park, I think, I think you're familiar with it. It's sloped, um, pretty extensively. And with that play area and that central lawn area, if, if an ambulance, you know, needs to access, uh, for an emergency, providing that access and that path and that turnaround, I think are, are extremely important.
Okay, so I'll jump into my comments, uh, regarding what, what I heard today. First and foremost, I want to thank all the residents that came out here, especially the folks that live around this neighborhood park. I know you folks have been going to all the different listening sessions, and you've definitely participated, and you've been heard. I'm hearing exactly what you're saying, and I hope I'm going to be vindicated right now by, uh, giving you a little bit about what I heard. First and foremost, coyotes and rodents are a huge problem with this park. It's been neglected for a very long time. We have a coyote den that's there. It's no, no big secret. Secondly, clearing the vegetation that's already there. Got to clean it up, start managing it. Those are some of the most important things right off the top. I understand the need for fire safety since that's a highly elevated area. So with that being said, California native plants, I think I've heard that a time or two throughout all these listening sessions. Also, we're hearing maintenance because people don't want the park to regress back into its current state, which is lots of gopher holes, not very well-maintained grass. So hearing you there too. Uh, my recommendation, just off of what I'm hearing so far, is we need to, to get within budget of 4.5 million. Um, I know these developer impact fees are a good problem to have. I also know that listening to all the public comments tonight about dog parks, a lot of folks want awfully showers and they want to be more centrally located. I know being seven minutes away isn't a huge ordeal, but then again, in all the listening sessions that I attended, a lot of these people weren't really pushing to have a park, dog park, all the way up in that area. I do also feel that having cyclone fence along the frontage of that park isn't really a fit for the neighborhood. And I've also taken notes in previous meetings that people don't want any kind of court or ping pong table, which was a new one for me tonight. They don't want any fire pits either because of the highly elevated area. What they've basically asked for is a very simple walking trail, very cleanly landscaped park, keeping it natural, having the California native plants, and a playset in there. That's pretty much what, what the folks have been asking for this neighborhood. So with that being said, um, I think my, my overall comment is we need to take Verde's design and really try to boil it down to what we've been hearing from the residents in this area that are going to be using this park. That's my comments for tonight.
Well, just, just keep in mind that if we're going to use development impact fees, it cannot be used for existing deficiencies. So this was a park previously, and so any expansion of the park to use development impact fees is key to funding this.
So what you're saying is we have to have new amenities added to this park in order to use those funds?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I still think we need to come back and try to get in the $4.5 million budget.
Thank you. Um, other comments? Councilmember Wynn?
I'll just be quick, but just, I'll mirror what, uh, Councilmember Rinaldi just mentioned. Uh, I, I think we should make a best effort to trim down, uh, the, the costs to a point where we originally budgeted. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Riley?
Thank you for all of the comments. And the prices, it sounds like a pricey. How about the parking? This beautiful community park, where we got a parking, parking on the street?
Yes, Councilmember, so the, the parking would be on the street. Um, part of the community engagement, uh, we heard, um, loud and clear that the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding community did not want a parking lot, uh, at this park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And, um, yeah, I mean, I think I agree with the comments that we maybe should try to trim this down. You know, this was a park that had zero amenities. Uh, right, right now it has, it has zero amenities. As far as I can recall, it never had any amenities. I don't know if it even ever had like a simple walking path around it. So even that would be, uh, I think, a new amenity, a bench. I don't think it ever had benches or picnic tables or anything like that. So I think that would all be very welcome, uh, to improve this park, uh, along with the playground. Um, I think I agree with the comments that maybe the ping pong tables are not necessary here. Um, you know, they're well-used over by Central, by the rec center, but, um, I don't, we generally don't have them as an, in park amenity. The fitness court, I agree, probably not a great fit here. Maybe if there were a couple of like smaller, you know, fitness machines that are a little bit more, you know, passive, um, as opposed to one large court structure, um, which we already have in Millbrae, and it's, it's a great amenity, um, to have. What else was I going to say? Oh, a, a couple of the designs I saw for those round benches with, I think it's, it's kind of a cool idea, but, but a couple of the designs looked a bit eccentric and I think would kind of not fit with the idea of it being more of a, a natural look. Um, you know, I, I think the Leo's Club is still working on their plastic recycling project, so maybe this would be an opportunity to, um, pick out a couple of spots that Leo's Club maybe would be able to donate, um, their benches for, um, and, and save a, a few dollars there. Um, you know, i- I, I think I know the response from the neighbors, but I, I remember several years ago, it was once thought that maybe this could be a location for like a playing field, um, you know, with the large open space and really nice views, uh, from that area. Um, but I assume that was not wanted by the neighbors due to the crowd, uh, crowds. I- is that something that potentially could be accommodated within this design? Like maybe a, a younger, you know, five and under, something like that, uh, field? I s- I see the head shakes, but...
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I've been making up with some of that background. We...
But geometrically, within the, within the design?
We did initially propose, um, basketball courts, tennis courts, um, multi-use, um, uh, playing fields, and that was, that was nixed pretty fast by the community members.
Okay. Um, and in terms of the central lawn area, would the plan be to have that be irrigated or not? Yes. Okay. Um, and maybe with that, uh, type of hybrid grass similar to what's used at, um, Josephine Waugh Park, that's very low water usage? Okay, that would be good. Yeah, I don't know if I have any other comments. But yeah, I agree, you know, the design looks great, but it would be nice if we could, um, maybe, uh, trim it down a bit, um, and maybe remove a couple of these amenities that have been identified.
So Vice Mayor May, so just, just keep in mind, you know, good planning for a community, a city, is to allocate resources throughout the city. So they're walkable, they're accessible by the neighborhood. Kind of this notion that we've heard tonight to shove everything into Central Park, I don't, I can't recommend that. Um, and I think that that's something that we would need to go back to the drawing board, have additional neighborhood meetings, um, because Central Park kind of seems like the, the last refuge to solve a problem that we're trying to solve here. And I'm not necessarily, from a planning, urban planning perspective, thinking that that's, that's really the best idea. I think having a park that spreads people out, spreads the demand out, that has a use that we've determined that is, is needed within these amenities, I think is key to having a successful, well-planned, um, city.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's not what I heard from the community, but shoving anything into Central Park, I think...
Well, we started talking about a dog park and all of that, and, and if it's going to, if the, if the city council going down a path to agree to eliminate the dog park, I mean, I don't, I would not recommend that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's, there's definitely needs for, a need for more dog park areas in Millbrae. I think it's great that we're building one at, uh, Bayside Manor. Um, I personally don't have a problem with having a dog park here as, uh, you know, assuming it's not a, a huge cost factor, but if it can be done in an attractive way, not like a chain-linked fence or something around... and not like a chain link fence or something around it that's, um, unsightly from the street. Um, and I agree, you know, not, not having a parking lot there. Every time I've driven down this stretch, there's always ample street parking, uh, along Sebastian. Um, yes, Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thanks, Vice Mayor Oliver. Just a couple of quick comments. I don't believe everyone's saying to shove a dog park in Central Park. I, we hear the people with the off-leash showers request. I could tell you in the Park and Recs meetings, all the public comments that came out related to a dog park were for a request for off-leash showers in Central Park. That was a simple request. In my mind, um, looking at some of the designs I saw tonight from Verde, I saw a lot of modern, uh, lot of modern themes, which I, for this particular park, I don't feel is quite a fit. For this particular park, when I look at it and see it, I'm more so reminded of Uniperis Era Park, when you get all the way to the top and you have that beautiful view of the airport and the bay. And I think to take away from that by putting elements that, quite frankly, you know, I look at some of those modern elements and they look like something that's more so out of like, uh, Metropolitan Park somewhere in San Francisco, like the workout concept or the, uh, the seating where you're having a bench within a circle. To me, if we're gonna put benches in there, I think it needs to match the natural aesthetics of that area, which would be, you know, some kind of natural looking bench, uh, a nice walking trail, permeable surface, we heard that. Those, that's what resonates with me. If we were gonna do some kind of run, dog run in that area, I mean, I gotta tell you, all the comments that we've heard over the past, I don't know how long we've been doing this for, two months now, three months, listening to these comments? Most people want a centralized area to bring their dog. They don't want to go up to that area. I think maybe there was less than a handful of people that were gonna entertain bringing their dog up into that area. So my final comment of the night on this is natural aesthetic, try not to take away from the natural beauty of the area, nothing too modern. I think putting something too modern's gonna really stick out like a sore thumb. And if possible, thinking about taking some of these developer impact fees and perhaps doing a dedicated dog park off of the Spur Trail would be my recommendation, somewhere off of Millbrae Avenue, if possible.
Well, let me address that. So if you look at Millbrae Avenue, you look at this, the, the Spur Trail right now, we have a skate park, we have the fitness court, eh, there's a lot there and there's not a lot of parking. And so anybody that's going to drive there versus drive here, I mean, just keep this in mind and, and as we're thinking about it, right, the logistics. So I, I think again, good planning practice says, you know, put the amenities, you know, this is a heavily populated area. It's the largest neighborhood in the city of Millbrae, Mills Estates. And so I, I don't know, we haven't quantified how many people from Mills Estates and that population go to Central Park to walk their dog or go to Central Park to use it or to go to the Spur Trail. But I think that there is enough demand with the new population, right, that's being built, the, the amount of housing units that are, have just opened or they're under construction that contribute to development impact fees. You know, having a park within the primary service area, the, the city's only 3.3 square miles, so pretty much anywhere where you build a park is accessible relative to, you know, the time and distance and, and usability. So we're, we're, we're pretty lucky, y- you know, in that, um, area to be able to say, yeah, th- this is a park that is accessible, that can be used by people that even live, you know, over in the, um, in the new transit area. So just keep that in mind as we're looking for funding.
Yeah, I would also say the area designated as a dog area in the design is kind of separate from the upper area where the field is. There's probably not much else you could do with that area unless you want to just completely not develop it. Um, I mean, ma- maybe it could be, you know, maybe the small dog and the large dog area could be merged into one space, um, if that saves a little bit of money or if that's, uh, makes it seem more of a natural, um, appearance, aesthetic.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge would be the design of that, to make it blend in with the park because, you know, one of the previous public comments we got was around chain link fence.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah. And I think the chain link fence would just be a complete disservice to that neighborhood.
We, we do have a slide of, of, you know, other alternatives. I mean, that, if, if that's the constraining factor, there are, there are definitely alternatives. But then when you talk about maintenance, a wood fence or something like that is going to be heavily, eh, high maintenance. Just also remember, if you look at the, at the design, um, the central, um, grass area with the, um, with the trail around it, there's a, there's a pretty significant elevation difference between the central green area and then the bottom park of where the, um, where the pet park is located. So it's not flat, it's, it's sloped pretty significantly.
And currently, there's a lot of vegetation that's where that dog run proposed area would be.
Yeah, I don't think it's native vegetation though, just, just so you...
Shrubs.
Correct.
So I would think that if, if they were gonna consider some type of fence, I think there'd be some type of redesign or some new idea to come back with.
Go to slide 38. Now, this is just something that we had. I mean, this is, this is still, go back one. Um, you know, this is, this is still a chain link, but there, here's an example of a photo that was taken, um, at another park. But so we can, we, you know, we can bring back to the city council some different aesthetics, uh, for fencing and screening, um, that would still maintain, uh, you know, the needs for, you know, a pet area. But, you know, the aesthetics, we, we can change the aesthetics. But when we start to introduce wood products, just remember, um, there's a useful life and there's more maintenance associated with that and more cost to maintain it.
Any other comments from the council? Okay. Um, do we have to take action on this or it's just informational? How it is an action item?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor, so the recommendation is to, um, adopt this, um, park design, um, but if there's other, you know, it's, it's at the pleasure of the city council if you'd like us to go back to the drawing board, uh, we would appreciate, you know, the, the specifics on what those changes would be. If there is a desire to reduce the cost by, you know, $1.5 million, you know, we would like that direction because then we can, we can do that and then bring that, that back to the city council for consideration.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to have this go back to design, uh, so we can trim it up so we don't have the $1.42 million delta. Also, you know, based on the comments that I heard from residents today, simplicity, natural aesthetics, not having ping pong tables or modern, uh, amenities like benches made out of aluminum and stuff like that. So I would think simplicity would be it. I'd be open to seeing the fence designs, but I'm still on, no pun intended, the fence on it. So...
Yeah. We, we can certainly bring those back. I would just like to ask the, uh, design team, because anytime we go back to the drawing board, you know, there's costs associated with it. So within our budget and things, we'll work, we'll work with Verde Design, uh, to bring back, um, you know, various iterations of this at the four and a half million dollar cost estimate. We may have to bring a contract amendment back to the city council for that to happen. Um, so just, I want to put that on your radar.
I'll second that.
Okay. Yeah, and also, you know, to, uh, take into account the comments that were made, um, by the council as to, things to look out for to get to that point. Okay. All right, so we have a motion on us and a second. Um, I guess, can we vote by machine with only four members present? Or we could do a roll call, whatever.
I recommend that you stick with the roll call.
Okay. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Newen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
All right. The city council director staff to bring back, uh, the design, um, to trim down and return to council. The motion passed by 4-0 with, my, with Mayor Fung recused.
And you know, Mayor Fung plans to join for council comments or...
Staff will contact him and see if he will be returning.
Okay. Uh, maybe we can get started, um, without him and if, if he can join at the end, that would be great. Uh, so let's start with, uh, Councilmember Dwayne.
Okay. Uh, I've attended the, uh, LPMG, uh, it's basically Caltrain, uh, committee and ridership has been increasing since the pandemic, so that's a good sign for Caltrain. And, uh, they like, they believe it's the electrification of the new trains that are causing this positive impact on ridership. Uh, Caltrain also has a new parking app, uh, called Park Mobile. Uh, you can still buy tickets through Clipper and TDM, but, uh, there's some changes due to some financial reasons. Uh, you can't, you have to use a newer version of the Clipper card. Uh, there's also, uh, they just want to bring awareness that we do have, we're gonna be hosting, uh, Super Bowl, I forgot what year it is, and FIFA. So, uh, just to get the word out and they're, and they encourage ridership with Caltrain. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just, uh, call on council comments, uh, to get it wrapped up.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay. Councilmember Riley, please?
Hi. I was attending West Corin Studio ground opening in Millbrae. It was so many people there. I was shocked. Most are you, the young people there. So it's great because the life is good. We need to get it healthy. How, then we get it, do exercise, get a six pack. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thanks. Just want to thank the public again today for coming out to, uh, be heard, listen to a lot of people's comments, uh, let the folks know that have concerns around off-leash showers, Central Park, you're being heard, I'm working on that. Uh, also, you know, want to thank the folks that put on the Japanese Cultural Festival. Uh, it was an excellent time there. A lot of wonderful folks came out there, had the opportunity to work the CERT booth, you know, so thank you to all the CERT members that volunteered their time. Um, also had the opportunity to attend the Mid-Autumn Festival and a lot of festivals going on lately, so it's hard to keep track of all of them. But, uh, had a great time there too and working the CERT booth. So those are my council comments for tonight. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I went to attend the, um, Community Enhancement Committee meeting. Their meeting was canceled for a lack of quorum, but there had been, I guess, some discussions behind the scenes of a potential merger between Community Enhancement Committee and the Cultural Arts Committee. I think both groups would like kind of more information from each other about how that would work and, um, so hopefully, uh, maybe a joint meeting of both committees could be scheduled, um, in the near future. Um, I think that's all that I have and, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to, uh, provide comments and close us out.
Thank you so very much, everybody, and thanks for running the meeting while it's away. Um, so had a, uh, BART staff meeting along with Councilmember, uh, C.C. Riley at the BART station on September 30th, a very productive meeting. Um, you know, with Michael Jones and Sylvia Lamb and, and their staff, talking about many different, um, enhancements, uh, that needs to be done, uh, that we both, the city and, and BART can agree on and continuing that partnership, uh, to making sure that the station is well cared for, um, cleaned, safe, and, you know, the, obviously the, the fair gate has already been completed throughout the entire Sematow County. In fact, I think the entire BART line. Um, so, you know, as part of the continued, uh, partnership and, and collaborations with BART and some of the regional transit partners, um, getting things done. It, it's what this meeting is all about and be able to, you know, really make sure that the station is, it's delivering services that, uh, riders throughout the entire Sematow County deserve. So, uh, and one of the best part of our discussion is that they agreed to, uh, come to Millbrae and we also discussed the possibility of us hosting a town hall community meeting, uh, along with the BART staff, uh, and also inviting the MTC representative from, uh, and the Board of Supervisors, David Canepa, to join, uh, and so that the riders in Sematow County can ask questions about, um, you know, what BART has been doing for them, uh, and how can we make transit more available, more accessible and safer for everybody. So I'm hoping that our staff, um, and, uh, under the city manager's guidance, uh, can make that, uh, town hall meeting as soon as possible, make it available as soon as possible. Um, had a brief conversation with the TA staff, Transit Authority, Transportation Authority. Senate Bill 63 has been signed by the governor, which means, uh, it'll take effect in January 2026 and they can begin collecting signature and we're likely to end up on, um, with the ballot, uh, by November of 26 by midterm. And hopefully we can authorize a certain amount of funding to make sure, um, that we save the transit agencies, BART, Muni, Caltrain, uh, from their deficit. Um, you know, we need to make sure transit continue to be successful for Sematow County riders and our Sematow County residents. Uh, went to the Cal Cities in Long Beach, you know, lots of great sessions, talked to many folks, uh, that continue educations and collaborations, it's extremely important. Uh, it's good to also have Councilmember Rinaldi, Councilmember Dwayne, and also Councilmember Riley, uh, in Cal Cities, uh, representing the city. Um, you know, West Corin Studio has just opened up, um, and yet another demonstration that Millbrae continues to be an attractive place, uh, for opening new businesses and, and is part of our commitment as well to make sure every business in Millbrae has a pathway to success. Um, and, uh, it, I think that's one of the last few vacant, empty storefronts that's been on Broadway. And so it's good to know that our policy decisions of, you know, focusing on economic development is paying off. Um, for all I know, you know, that space that West Corin now occupies has been vacant for decades and ended up with the big S in the end. Um, so, you know, congrats to this new business and congrats to all the folks who make that grand opening possible, uh, enabling our businesses to, uh, to thrive in Millbrae. Um, you know, we've got really, really, you know, diversity as we all know, uh, and being able to celebrate everybody's culture openly and freely, uh, and being supported is a big deal for us. Uh, and, and that's what the unique, um, advantage of being in Millbrae. It's, it's that we celebrate our diversity. So therefore, we had some very successful, um, Mid-Autumn Festival and Japanese Cultural Festival, thanks to MCC and, um, the Japanese Cultural Festival Committee for putting on, uh, these annual festivities and, and events. Um, and, um, that's what Millbrae is about, bring people together, uh, and everybody can come out and celebrate the way they know how and the way they enjoy and the way they see that this community should be. So with that said, um, that's wonderful and thank you so... Thanks, everybody. I miss all of you. I'm still traveling overseas and then I'll be back soon, hopefully, uh, and, um, and I can join tonight at 9:47 PM. Thanks, everybody.